This meeting of the Board of Education, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here. I see Will Doran in the back. It's always good to have the press here. And if you'll join me now for a moment of silence, and let's please keep in mind our neighbors to the north who are still suffering the ravages of Hurricane Sandy. Join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and if you'll stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. This is a time that we always reserve for public comments. I would like to read our policy concerning public comments. Each person will be allowed three minutes during which to speak. To ensure an orderly presentation and disposition of items, board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Public comments shall not interfere with the board's duty to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. Individuals who address the board shall not use language that obscene, vulgar, contains fighting words, or otherwise disrupts the orderly conduct of business. Discussions regarding particular employees, litigation, student records, or other potentially confidential matters may not be discussed during the public comment session. Persons who willfully interrupt, disrupt, or cause disturbances at official meetings of the board may be directed to leave by the board chair. Our first speaker is Brian McCray.
Good evening. My name is Brian McCray, a lifelong resident of Lee County with two children in public schools. I'm here to ask you to remove Jeff Moss from his position.
You're out of order.
There has been a lot of misinformation going around about what happened at the seat forum. I want you to hear the truth from me. I attended a candidate forum being held at the old courthouse. Individuals attending this forum were given the opportunity to ask questions of county commissioners, state officials, and judicial candidates. At one point, one of the commissioners mentioned something about the schools which upset Jeff Moss so badly he felt that...
Mr. Clark, it says discussion pertaining to particular employees is not allowed.
Okay, felt the need to address the candidates. Even Commissioner Reeves, who was sergeant in arms, remarked that that looked like steam coming out of his ears when he headed to the podium before, his angry exchange with the candidates. Rather than, after all that happened, rather than calm down, he pointed at a com... I mean, I'm trying to tell the truth about what happened.
You cannot, you talk about particular personnel. We deal with personnel issues in closed session.
Right, okay. Well, so anyway, with his finger in another commissioner's face, I politely asked him to sit down. I said to him very simply, "You need to sit down." I did not get in his face. I did not curse. I did not even move towards him. I did not stand up. I was not threatening or unprofessional in any way. In fact, I was trying to diffuse the confrontation that he started. Rather than calm down, Jeff Moss proceeded right to me.
I think that's enough. You may sit down.
All right. Well, I have the next one for my...
Yes, you may. Go ahead and proceed.
All right. This one's, "Hi, my name is Chris McCray. I'm the wife of Brian McCray and mother of two Lee County school students. I'm typically not a very vocal person. However, when I feel someone has done wrong, I will definitely be vocal and stand up for what I believe in. In this instance, I am standing up for my husband, Brian McCray, Jonathan Fallon, a 14-year-old student, Lee County Sheriff Major Carlton Lyles, and many others that witnessed the unprofessional behavior than not at the forum. I would like to say that my husband is a very honest person and speaks the truth in all instances. And yes, he did get a finger pointed in his face with effu said to him while not being provoked in any way by Brian. All my husband did was try to diffuse an already angry superintendent by asking him to sit down. Brian did not curse or flip him off. After this behavior continued to go south. Another instance happened after Jonathan Fallon uttered that was real professional. The superintendent once..."
That's enough. I think that's enough. Thank you. The next speaker is Jonathan Fallon.
Since we can't mention names...
That's great.
The video of the incident is here with me today for any of the school board members that want to see it in real time so that you don't think that there's an Oliver Stone conspiracy theory, that it has been edited. What you can clearly see, you may not be able to hear the expletives that were dropped, but you can see the rage. Our children in this school district deserve better. It was not professional, and it was not courteous. You set a precedent, if this goes untouched, that any child that drops that expletive is free to go. Because if somebody in the school system says it, then you send the message that it's okay for the children to say it. And we deserve better here in Lee County.
Thank you. Mike and Wendy McCathen?
My name is Mike McCaffrey, pretty much new to Lee County. To let you know, I'm pretty pleased with, since I've been here, and my kids attend BT Bullock. I've got two girls, 18 years old, and a principal there. I'm happy. That's all I got to say. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Richard Lydigan? He marked his off. That's not the order of the list. You can either speak or pass.
Your time's taken.
The record will show that Mr. Clark was listed. He struck his name, then moved it further down the list to speak later. So it be that. I was offering courtesy of going first, and I guess he changed his mind. It's a little disheartening to come to a board meeting in the state of North Carolina, United States of America, where there's no prayer at the beginning of the meeting, where the school board has a superintendent that says F-bombs in public at a candidate forum for the future leaders of our county. Then when a citizen comes up who was harmed by the school system's employee, to let y'all know what's going on after y'all made comments to the paper that imply that his upstanding citizen, a treasurer of his PTO, business leader in the community, would not be truthful. Brian McCray's done nothing in his life to warrant such contempt from this board. If proper measures are not taken to correct this activity, this improper activity, then you're setting example for every child, every adult in Lee County that it's completely proper to walk up to somebody in front of a 14-year-old child and use the most profane language possible. Thank you.
Keith Clark?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Keith Clark. I live at 212 Acorn Drive in Sanford, North Carolina. As I tell the commissioners, we also have a lot of squirrels. If any of you would like to come by and pick them up. If I start to say anything provocative, please let me know. I will not mention anyone's name. Anyone who, I would have a suggestion, anyone who offers to provide a copy that they say is an original of the video that was posted to the internet, it ought to be accepted if they're willing to let it be transferred directly to your computers so you could have the, or what they claim to be the original. Secondly, I can tell you that an individual who has spoken here, I have spoken with officials, law enforcement officials, and one of the individuals who has spoken here was told if he did not cease his activity, he was going to be taken outside. I want to commend this board for its transparency. There's been a lot in the code of ethics, about code of ethics lately in the news. You're the only board, governing board in this county, that has a procedure for enforcing that code of ethics. You need it because you've got some members that could be found in violation of it. I'm embarrassed sometimes as a conservative by people who misuse the Constitution, either out of their lack of understanding or desire to use it for their own purposes. If this board did anything to limit the freedom of speech of a schoolteacher in a private setting, not on the school, not on the school grounds, not in a school classroom, then there would be tremendous uproar. Well, you know, the amendment applies, the free speech applies to all. At the school level, employees are encouraged to participate in community activities to strengthen the relationship between the schools and the community. That's Policy 500, Section D, under School Administrators. When a candidate for office and an elected official lie in a public forum and make statements that would be slanderous about the Board of Education if they were a private, if you were a private entity, I am proud of someone who comes to the defense and simply asks, "Show me who, if you have that evidence, take it to, give it to me, we work it out," or "Take it to the prosecutor." That's standing up. And standing up means standing up when you walk up, standing up when you're there, and standing up all the way back. And I applaud you for the professionalism of those members who have not attempted to, may use this project, this issue for partisan political reasons. Thank you very much.
Frank Thompson?
Thank you. I'm Frank Thompson, Sr. I live at 191 Cover Bridge Lane, Sanford. And it's, I don't know which is worse, back there or over here. But, meaning in your seat or where I'm standing, because I have been in both places. Listening to all the news lately and living in Lee County and reading the News and Observer every day, in Wake County, I see a terrible situation that I don't want to ever see in Lee County. Politics in Lee County, in the schools, is never good. That's why this school board is nonpartisan. I want it to stay nonpartisan. You took an oath to educate every child in Lee County. That and hiring a superintendent is your major responsibilities. You're doing a great job. Things aren't easy. In situations you're going to have, you've got to work together and come out with the best solutions that are best for, first of all, the children of Lee County, the staff of Lee County schools, and then the people of Lee County. I heard a board member say one time that it was a shame that his constituents couldn't vote. Those kids that he is concerned about educating aren't old enough to vote. But it's, it is still his responsibility to offer that child, and every child in Lee County, an opportunity to learn and to advance and to go on to a great life. Things are not easy. It's not going to be easy. But do not, I ask you, please, put us in the situation that Wake County schools are in today. Thank you so much.
And that concludes our public comment section. At this time, I would like to share our vision of Lee County schools. Lee County schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. I've also been advised that we should share our code of ethics. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We should avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts and returns for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We should avoid the misuse of public funds. We should avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and we should avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of conducts established by North Carolina Public, uh, North Carolina School Board Association. At this time, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. I would also like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October the 8th, October the 9th, and October the 24th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the approval of the minutes for 10-8, 2012, 10-9, 2012, and 10-24, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. I just have one piece of housekeeping that we need to do. I think it's very probable that the state legislature in their next session is going to bring up the issue of teacher tenure. And the North Carolina School Board Association is asking us for some advice on how we'd like to approach that. The two options are to, A, allow teachers who currently have tenure to keep it and then stop the process of tenure as we go forward. And the other option would be just totally do away with tenure as it currently exists. We don't need a vote, but those of us who are attending the meeting in Greensboro next week probably need some direction on the consensus. Is there any discussion on which of those two options we would prefer?
As an educator, I, I think that it would be only fair to our teachers who have been in the profession to retain their tenure, and at this point, those who enter the profession could enter under the new guidelines. But I'm not in favor at all of discontinuing tenure for our professionals who have worked up to this point to obtain that.
And I would be in agreement with Ms. Carlisle.
Are there any comment, any other comments?
I would just, I concur with Ms. Carlisle. You know, it would be a little bit difficult to, to remove something from, you know, take away something that, that somebody had already earned. And so, given those are the only two options, then that would be my, would be my feelings as well.
And the group that's going to, to represent us as a board, another recommendation would be that we phase that in as we did the administrators' tenure.
I agree with everything Wendy said.
Then we'll vote the wishes of the board. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up a couple of things on our announcements. I want to brag on our Lee County High School football team, who is currently in the state playoffs. And of course, and the Southern Lee soccer, men's soccer team is still in the playoffs. So we're really proud of our, our sports teams. And at this point, Dale Smith, if you would like to present your audit, please.
Evening, board members. Dr. Moss, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to perform the board's audit for the year ended June 30th, 2012. The audit is basically separated into two sections. We perform an audit of the board's finances, and then we also perform an audit of the board's compliance with various federal and state laws and regulations. And this pretty much pertains to the state and federal grant monies that the board receives. And there are a total of four opinion letters or audit letters that are included in the report that we've issued. And we're happy to report that all four of those letters are clean, unmodified opinions. So that, that basically means that we didn't note any areas of concern as a result of our audit procedures. And we also noted no findings or question calls. None of those are reported in the back in the compliance section. So there shouldn't be any monies that have to be repaid back to the state or federal governments as a result of our audit. So these, these letters are basically about as good as it is in writing from an audit standpoint. We spent a good bit of time looking at detailed transactions, payroll, general dispersments, individual schools. Based on those procedures, we didn't note any unusual transactions. The books and records look very good. So again, overall, it was a very, very good, very clean audit. I was going to look at a few pages out of the report if everyone's got their copy handy. I'll just point out pages three through nine of the report are what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis Section. And we won't really look at those pages, but I would just recommend that, that each of you read through that. That section provides a good narrative description of the board's results of operation for last fiscal year, comparing it to the previous fiscal year. But if you would, turn to page 12 of the report. And page 12 is the balance sheet of the governmental funds of the district. And this includes all of the funds except the school food service fund. And the first column is, is the one that we'll pay the most attention to. It's the general fund. And the next to last number from the bottom, $2,607,535. That's the Board of Education's ending fund balance as of June 30th, 2012. And two numbers right above that, you see a sign for subsequent year's expenditures, $1,248,050. That's the amount of that fund balance that the board has designated to balance the 2012, 2013 budget. And that leaves the board with $824,871, that number right below that, of unassigned fund balance. And this would basically be fund balance that's available to be used if something else were to come up that you needed to appropriate funds for. So just something to keep in mind is that if, if the board does in fact use that $1,248 in the 1213 fiscal year, you wouldn't have enough fund balance to be able to then rely on fund balance again at that same level in the next fiscal year, if that makes sense. You'd only have $824,000 left that you could use to balance your budget with. So just, you know, I'll throw that out there. Okay, and the, the other ending fund balances, you can see across the restricted revenue, $1,909, capital outlays, $445,000, and then individual schools have $513,000. And the following page shows the revenues and expenditures of these same funds for the year ended June 30th, 2012. And, and this report reads down and comes back to the same ending fund balances that we just looked at. Down at the very bottom, that end of year, you see the $2,607,535. And all the way across, those are those same ending fund balances. Did anyone have any questions on those, those two pages? Okay, and the child nutrition, it's considered an enterprise fund, so it gets presented separately. If you turn over to page 20, we'll look at it. And this page shows the revenues and expenses of the school food service fund. And the bottom number that you see there, net assets at the end of the year, that's the same thing as fund balance. And it's $1,949,202. And that, that number does also include fixed assets. I think there's about $600,000 of fixed assets that, so that really wouldn't be spendable. It's probably about $1,003 of what you would call spendable fund balance. Two numbers above that, $6,179, that's essentially the net profit for the year for the school food service fund. So the, the fund basically broke even for last year. But I will point out that it was able to pay $125,000 of indirect cost. So I think that's the first time in several years that the program's, you know, been healthy enough to be able to pay some indirect costs. I think that, that program's operating fairly soundly as of June 30th, 2012. Any questions on that? And again, overall, the audit went very well. I'd just add, we, we audited a lot of school districts and, you know, there's a few things we look for at districts to determine whether or not they're doing things that they should be doing. You know, a couple of things that we look at that, you know, you as board members probably don't get information on are months of employment and dollar allotments that flow through the school district. The state of North Carolina allocates funds to the school district in the state public school fund. Positions are what y'all get. So one of the things we look for is, did the district use all the positions that were allotted to it? And, and did the district leave any money on the table in those dollar allotment areas? And we noted no waste whatsoever as far as those areas went. Y'all, y'all actually got a very well-run finance department based on other areas that we go to across the state. Tammy and her staff, they do a good job. I thought the records looked, looked good. Any questions?
Thank you for your, thank you for your...
Yeah, I just want to say something. As, we've asked him a lot of questions at the committee meeting. Mr. Smith satisfied our questions that we're asking, and we feel like the audit is thorough and good. And this is your first year of auditing the school system here in Lee County.
That's right.
And from all the answers you gave to us during the finance committee meeting, I was quite satisfied with, with your work, and we appreciate what you've done.
We appreciate it. Just let us know if you have any questions. Feel free to give us a call anytime.
Thank you for your audit, and thanks to the finance committee for a nice report. And my compliment, our compliments to Mrs. Howington and her staff. They do a superb job.
Thank you.
Dr. Moss?
Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to bring before you tonight BT Bullock Elementary School and Lee Early College. They'll be making the presentations for tonight. First up will be BT Bullock.
Good evening. I am Ms. Needham. I am a third grade teacher at BT Bullock. This is my wonderful tutor, Ms. Kumer. And these are some of my lovely students. We have Madison McCathern, Ainsley Kimball, William Patterson, Bren Livingston, Ian Pomeranz, Kiana Williams, and Kayla Roche. And they have been working for the past week on the presentation to you, and they're a little nervous, so bear with us. But they want to share with you a piece of technology that they use in the classroom. They said, "How many ways, Ms. Needham, can you say thank you for the laptops?" So they want to show you a little piece of what they do each week. They're so glad that they get to go beyond paper, pencil, and textbook, and be creative, and use Glockster, which is what they're going to share with you, as a tool to show what they've learned and how they can use it and help others. All right. Are you ready? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ainsley Kimball, and this is my friend Madison McCathern. We are all students in Ms. Needham's third grade class at ETV Elementary. We are here to introduce and find an exciting way to learn and share. Glockster EDU is an interactive system that we can use to show our creativity with audio, video, and graphics. Our blogs are signed to us by Mrs. Needham and Mrs. Kumer each week. We are given instructions as to what is expected to be present in our blog. After that, it is up to us to be creative and use what we have worked. One of our projects was to create a blog of our favorite fairy tales. We have been learning about fables in our classrooms, so I decided to use Cinderella as mine. I turned the puzzle for my blog. We have questions to answer these questions. How do you know it is different?
What are the characters?
What are the characters?
What are the characters?
How do you know?
How do you change the characters?
How do you change the characters?
What is the setting?
To summarize the stories using any medium.
Why don't you use graphics and videos?
Finally, we can use graphics and videos to show our fairy tales. Glockster is so much fun because we can use our imagination using pictures, graphics, audio, and even videos we make of ourselves. We love using technology to learn and be creative. Thank you for inviting us to present Glockster EDU. Our real question to a writer.
Are there any questions?
What, what grade, what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade? Wow. I would've thought you were probably in the 10th grade.
And, and you're, you all already know how to blog, is that correct? You're, you're way up on this board, I suspect. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Bill, that will be a tough act to follow.
Dr. Moss, member of the board, I'd like to thank you for providing an opportunity for Lee Early College to present tonight. We've brought members of our competition club. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rodney Schmitz, who's our advisor, and Andrew is gonna run the show tonight, and he's brought some slideshow with you and some of our trophies, trophies that we've won over, won over the last year, and some plans on what we're gonna do this year. So Andrew, she's all yours.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Ruiz. I'm here basically to share with you information about our extracurricular activities at Lee Early College, most notably competition clubs, which is essentially a club where we compete. It's pretty self-explanatory. And how many people here like science? Did I just get a...
I noticed you turned around today.
Okay, so this shouldn't be a very tough audience. Our most notable of our activities in competition clubs is Science Olympiad. It's a competition where, as you can see some of these odd-looking creations up here, we build things having to do with science, and we compete with them. That over there is a trebuchet, and we had to calibrate it to launch one of those artistically designed golf balls over there into a bucket meters away. That tower you see broken right there, that was its job. We had to see how much weight it could support. And this here, we had to calibrate the length of the string, this contraption, so that it could move a certain amount of meters in one direction and go back the other direction. I don't bore you with all that. Okay? So this was the first year we did Science Olympiad, 2008, 2009 year. And as you can see, there's not much to say about it, so we just put up a lot of pretty pictures there for you. We placed in one event out of a lot for regionals with a total number of five members. And this is our second year. And in this year, we placed in three of the events in one of the top 10 places, a total of nine members. It's almost 200%, right? And we also added another competition to our competition clubs. This is Quiz Bowl, where students are expected to answer questions on a variety of subjects, you know, just verbatim. And, you know, considering it was the first time we did it, we thought we did pretty well, fourth place in the county. This is the 2010-2011 year. And I don't think, I failed to mention these trophies over here. That one over there on the very left is the one we got from Quiz Bowl. It wasn't until our second year we got our first trophy, but we're definitely proud of it. And that's what all this is about, is about improving and constantly building upon these clubs to do better and better. This year, we actually, we actually made it to states and beat the guys at regionals. Science Olympiad placed overall third at regionals, three first-place events, and we went to states with those. And we scored in the top half at states, and we had a total of 13 members, growing and growing and growing. Next year, 2011-2012 year, and this is my personal favorite because it was my first. Science Olympiad made it overall to second at regionals, and so we didn't just go to states as a team to represent our school. I mean, well, in the events, we went as a team. I'm sorry. And we took top 10 at the states for two different events. And Quiz Bowl, we definitely picked up the slack. We made first place in the county and then second place at regionals. And we had a total of 23 members, which we're definitely very, very proud of. And this next year, we've added a lot, and we've got a lot more members. I think 35 was, you know, give or take, because it's still, still kicking off. But we started a new competition. We joined the Scholastic Cup, and one of the competitions under that is the 12 Competition, in which 12 students compete in a 12-subject questionnaire. And they have 12 minutes to complete the questions. And Quiz Bowl, of course, which we're hoping to do even better this time, you know, first at regionals, and hopefully get on to states. And Quill, which is a writing competition in which team members have to write in a particular style. It's not about how good you perform in English classes, whether you can replicate certain writing styles. And then chess competition, which yours truly is the instructor and captain and creator of that, even though Mr. Schmitz is getting a little bit in trouble. I didn't say that. He'll beat me up later. Science Olympiad, again, of course, you know, that's our, that's our main event. And art showcase for all the artistic people that we have at the school. It's definitely not me. And debate, and that's new. And we've made the goal to participate in at least one debate this year because we're just kicking it off. But hopefully, all these things will just keep getting better and better.
You wanna introduce the advisor?
My name is Mr. Schmitz, and this was sort of something I started in my first year at Lee Early College. Being the fact that we don't have sports teams, we need an identity as a school, and one thing that drives an identity is winning something. And we're really working hard at having a tradition of winning, and our competition clubs gives us that. We have the different events that we've done throughout the four years. We've slowly grown. It's gotten to be that more and more students are hearing about it. As you can hear, now we have approximately 35 members. We've added four new competitions. The students are very excited about this. This is our version of a sports team. We really, really look forward to our season, and as you could've seen, most of it kicks off at the, basically in the spring semester. So thank you for your support, and thank, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew, if I could just comment, thank you for coming, and we certainly are aware of your academic record, but we haven't been as aware of what your extracurriculars are. Thank you for bringing that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Ms. Vicki Wilkins to come forward, and she has a group of individuals from Southern Lee High School she'd like to introduce.
I am Vicki Wilkins, and I am proud to be a Southern Lee Cavalier. I have come this evening, and I have brought part of the Student Government Association, and I'm just not gonna tell you any other reason why we're here. I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it right over to my SGA president, because I think it's better that you hear from the people who have come to visit you this evening.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Ashworth. I'm SGA president of Southern Lee High School, and I would just like to say thank you for letting us be here today. It's a really good opportunity for us. And just to tell you a little bit about SGA, we are really, we like to come and we like to listen to what y'all have to say, because our club is about making it better and being leaders of our school. And if y'all ever would like to come to our meetings and see what we do, y'all are more than welcome. I'm a little nervous right now, but I'm trying. But SGA is a really big deal to me, and I know to all of my members. We take it really seriously. We like to do and make new, better things at school. And I know as seniors, and me being a senior myself, I wanna leave the school in a positive way. And being able to be a part of, in a school and being able to do something big is a really good opportunity, and I wanna leave it in a good way. So I'm gonna let all of my members come up and introduce themselves, and thank you again for letting us be here.
I'm Melissa Stack. I'm the vice president of SGA.
I'm Caitlin Franklin. I'm the vice president of the senior class.
I'm Cameron Wilson, and I'm the senior class president.
I'm Megan Baker, and I'm the junior class secretary.
I'm Emily Bromett, and I'm junior class president.
I'm Kelsey Arnold, and I'm the vice president of junior class.
I'm Madison Carter, and I'm the junior class treasurer.
I'm Eli Brightfield, and I'm the sophomore class secretary.
I'm Kellen Adams, and I'm the freshman vice president.
I'm Shantel Lewis, and I'm freshman president.
I'm Melissa Knowles, and I'm the freshman secretary.
Not to slight Eli, but we have girl power here, as you can see.
I was gonna say this, Wilkins.
I was gonna suggest that, that's a very smart young man right there.
Yes, absolutely. And I will tell you, the, the group that is standing behind me is extremely talented. And the rest of my officers would love to be here, but there's something called Two U.S. History Projects that are due tomorrow. I had a student who called this afternoon, and actually, she pulled herself in here this evening because she felt strongly enough about being here. But all of these young men and ladies that are standing here are involved in school activities, and they all ran for a purpose because they want to grow their school and they want to, to lead. And I admire them for stepping up and volunteering. Probably these young ladies and gentlemen at Bullock are probably looking at us and thinking, "Whoa, that will be me one day." And they will be. They will be. And that's the beauty of our school system. There's so many great things going on. And she's serious. She wants the school board to come to one of our meetings so we can sit down and have a talk and chat with you. We'd love to have you be our guest at any time. But thank you for allowing us to come this evening.
And Ms. Wilkins, I just met with many of them yesterday, and I made the same observation yesterday, not just at Southern Lee, but it is definitely a woman's world right now. The leadership at all three of our high schools seem, seemed to be overwhelmingly female-based. But they had some wonderful comments for me yesterday on the Student Advisory Committee, and it's, it is great to hear from those that we most affect, which are our student population.
Not just like the gentlemen, but if you'll just let me add this, Dr. Moss, my peppy students that are traveling to the elementary world, the kindergarten classes, three fourths, boys. Yes, they're coming.
That's, that's great.
They're coming. They're coming. But it's girl power right now. But thank you for allowing us to be here this evening.
Thank you for your service at your school.
Mr. Chairman, I'll call on Dr. Jim Atkinson to present our Clean School Award.
It is time to recognize the Clean School of the Month award, if they're correct this time this month, to our custodians who have done the best job keeping our schools clean. This month's winner is right, is Broadway Elementary School. I don't believe it.
Head at the back.
If Principal George Raile will come up and receive the spoils of the victory. We did have 14 schools that scored 90 or above, which is a testimony of the custodial staff, Mr. Jerry Pittman and his staff, that worked toward keeping the schools clean. We also had seven schools that scored over 96, and that custodial inspection team does have the white glove on, and they do check every corner and crack, and they do look into the crevices. So we want to congratulate...
And did you wanna go ahead and give Broadway's score?
Broadway scored 99.
Thank you, board, for this honor, and thank you, Dr. Atkinson, and you can thank Jerry and Charlene. And I won't tell you what I did with the white gloves when they left the campus, but I don't have to walk around with a white glove. This is by far collectively the best custodial staff I've had the pleasure of working with. You don't have to tell them anything. They handle it. When somebody's down, they pick that person up. As tonight, Chris Palmy Senior is not here. He's taking a test for a college course. But I would like to introduce Ms. Annette Fitzwater, Mr. Ricky Jackson, and head custodian Rodney Boykin. And I wanna thank them for keeping our school clean all the time. Thank you.
And Mr. Raile, don't forget your sign wherever it might be.
Next will be Sharon Spence to recognize our webpage of the month.
I have the pleasure tonight to introduce our webpage of the month winner, Mr. John Scobie. Mr. Scobie is a seventh-grade social studies, world cultures teacher at Eastlee Middle School. And accompanying him is Patricia Calderon, who is, you're there now, who is now the interim principal at Eastlee Middle School. Of course, Shannon Shuey is the principal and is out on maternity leave. And Amy Thomas is the web manager. And I want to say a special thank you to Amy for all she does in working with the teachers to make them as successful as Mr. Scobie and his colleagues are. Very quickly, let me just tell you a little bit about what the judges said about his website. Active external web links, text is neat, legible, and formatted for easy reading. Pages are well-organized, easy navigation between class pages. Content is accurate, complete, and well-written with minimal grammar spelling mistakes. That's important. Images and graphics complement the web pages. So overall, he just did an outstanding job with his webpage, and we are very appreciative, and I know his students and his parents are as well. So congratulations to you, Mr. Scobie. Thank you very much. This is a token of our appreciation for all you do. Thank you. And I will turn it over to Mr. Scobie, and he'll just quickly walk you through his webpage.
It is a pleasure to be here. I am new to Lee County, and it's been a pleasure to be a new teacher here, and it's been a pleasure since I've arrived in North Carolina. I really appreciate everything that the school does, the school board. Teachers are great, staff is great, the parents are great, the involvement is just outstanding. And in a second, if it comes up, I'll show you my webpage. We have that problem sometimes in class, too. But eventually, we get it sorted out. It's a, it's a good thing. It's a, it's a good thing.
I think that's a connection issue between the cable and the monitors. There we go. There we go. Had faith the whole time.
Always good. All right, the first thing that you see on my website from the school county is just a welcome page, okay, and just has a general introduction about me and some general contact information. You'll see that I listed my phone number where I can be reached at, as well as an email, okay? There's also another tab that has the same information, okay, my contact information, okay, so my number, my email, and the best times to reach me, okay? Because parental involvement, as we all know, is one of the key differences in our education for our young people, okay? Another tab is upcoming events, as we all know, report cards are out, we're having pickup tomorrow over Eastly, so that's one of the ways that parents can know that they need to come to school and get their child's report card so we can talk about anything that is a problem and get everybody on the right path. We also have useful links, which my students really use a lot of. It just sort of helps them transition around the website and go to different sources that I need them to go to safely, so they don't go to any site that isn't appropriate. So that's one of the things they have. And each one of those websites that we use, we use a lot of them, okay, has a brief description as well as a link, so they can click on that. I also provided a tab for a course description, so anyone enrolling in the course, coming into 7th grade, will know exactly what we're doing. It has objectives, areas of outline, okay, things we're going to talk about throughout the year, classroom procedures, how we conduct lessons itself, requirements and grading systems. It's very self-explanatory. As they said, I tried to keep it very simple and very readable. There's also some information about the curriculum as well, information on the county. Daily lesson plans is one of the things that parents really like, as well as students. They can go on there and see exactly what their homework is, it's posted in my room. Therefore, it's also posted online, they can see what assignments are due. And there's also a daily lesson plan, which basically gives them an outline for the week in my class and it tells you exactly what you're going to be doing in class every day. It's just a very basic outline, okay? As you can see today, there was no school, it was a workday. Kids really like it to know that. So make sure I put it in there nice and big for them. All right. One of the other really useful tools that is on here is a classroom handout section. Unfortunately, we all lose things, so it's always nice that we can go back and find where those things are. So there is a whole bunch of things that we use in class, such as the PowerPoints that we go through, any kind of study guide that we do, there's the pre-test, any project directions, they're all posted online there. They can go ahead and get them and access them 24/7. And a lot of those things we use Edmodo to submit through, therefore it's a little bit more digital, getting away from paper, kids like that a little bit more, it's easier for me. I don't lose as many things, it's always good. Recently, I became the soccer coach, so I just have some general information about our games and how we did and our record there. It's been a very good season. And probably their favorite tab is their student work on display. I take a lot of pictures of the things that we do in class, whether it be projects, and it goes on for a while because we do a lot of things in there. I just try to take pictures of it, so that way they can see what they're doing and they almost become like a superstar, they think. And they get to see, hey, this is what I did, what did you do? And I try to post it on there. I don't put everybody's on there, but I try to put as many as I can, because it does take a while to get all those pictures and upload them. But we try to do a variety of things and keep them motivated and learning because their education is important. Hopefully, they'll be the ones taking care of me someday when I'm old and I can't do anything. So I really do try my best to take care of them and make sure that they learn as much as they can, but without your help, I know it would not be possible. And for any parents out here today, I also know it would not be possible without your help and your support. Thank you very much, you have wonderful children. But that's all I really have to show you. It's very simple and hopefully can keep up some good work for you.
That's great, thank you. Great job.
Thanks again, Mr. Scobie.
Thank you.
It's now time for committee reports. We'll start with Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Linda Smith, please.
Mr. Chairman, the CNI, the Middle School CNI, met all, October the 31st at San Lee. And at that meeting, Dr. Bryan thanked the school students and the principals for their presentation at the State of Lee County Schools Forum. And he also referenced the very promising digital content partnership that is on the horizon. And Dr. Moss also expressed excitement about the unending possibility that the partnership holds and its impact in the classroom for students. The main focus of the CNI for that day was school improvement plans. And tonight, if you were to look in your packet, you will see the school improvement plans for the middle schools. And also during that time, the principal shared strengths as well as areas of improvement. And then our next middle school meeting will be January the 9th and it will be at West Lee. And on tomorrow, the CNI will be meeting, the elementary CNI will be meeting at Warren Williams. Okay? That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Next is Facilities and Technology, Mr. Benardi.
Mr. Chairman, Facilities and Technology Committee met on the 30th and we just discussed several items, one of which was a landscape project at Broadway Elementary in which the PTO would be involved and also the purchase of some equipment from the Maintenance Department. Both of these items are before you tonight on the consent agenda. We also received a construction update from Jerry Pittman in regards to the project here at Lee County High School and the completion of punch list items and majority of which has been completed. Still are awaiting closeout documents such as warranties and as-built drawings to be completed. And also, there's an issue with the drainage in the concession building that still needs to be addressed, but they're waiting till after, obviously waiting till after the football season to address that. And Mr. Pittman also made us aware of a water line issue at Floyd Night, the water line coming from the service to the building is quite old and has begun to leak pretty extensively. And Mr. Pittman was going to be soliciting some prices in repairing, repairing that line. We, that was the conclusion of our meeting and our next meeting is scheduled for November the 27th.
Thank you for Mr. Benardi. The next is Finance and Personnel, Mr. Akonosho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, to commend our finance officer and our staff for a job well done, for the audit, the auditor really gave them a good commendation and I'm quite happy and satisfied for that department. And I just want to say that if they keep doing the good job they're doing, our school is in good shape and they're managing our money very well for us. Also, I want to remind us that we have the financial statement. Many times you hear things around rumors and things around, we just have a CPA who came here to just commend our school system about our finances. So he's not coming to put his license on the line to be lying to this board. So I just want to say that our financial house is in good shape. The next thing, also, I want us to look at the financial statement that is in our package, also to look at the budget amendments that is in the package and also the budget calendar that we have to adopt. And that's all I have to say today, thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do in finance, Mr. Akonosho.
Thank you.
Finally, is policy, Mr. Sharp, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last Policy Committee meeting was October the 16th and we reviewed 22 policies that day and they're on tonight for first reading. Also tonight, we have 17 policies on for second reading. And our next meeting is set for November 20th at 5:00.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I just have one, as I was looking through the fundraiser agenda items, just a concern to me, just looking for what the, and I'm all about fundraisers if we need the funding, but just looking at the schools having to have fundraisers for books and art supplies and PE supplies is something that I'd like for us as a board to look at with our funding, where our allocations for different schools are going. That just caught my eye, that we're having fundraisers to raise money for things that I would like for us to try to figure out, other ways to help the schools have more of the things that they need.
As in increased funding?
Absolutely.
Is, is there a second to the motion? Actually, the motion hasn't been made yet, we need a motion.
Yes, motion for board approval for the consent agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. We'll now turn to unfinished business. Is there a motion to approve the policy for second reading?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the second reading of the following policies. Policy 1610 slash 7800, 2230, 3102, 3120, 3200, 3210, 3220, 3225 slash 4312 slash 37320, 3226 slash 4205, 3227 slash 37322, 3410, 3440, 7215, 6401 slash 8701, 6524, 7335, 7730 and 8220.
And since this is coming from committee, it does not need a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We can now move into new business. Is there a motion to approve the policies for first reading in Part 1 and Part 2?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the first reading of the following policies. 1310 slash 4002, 1320 slash 3560, 1510 slash 4200 slash 7270, 2430, 3300, 3405, 3430, 3460, 4050, 4150, 4152, 4153, 4155, 4331, 4335, 4700, 5000, 5020, 6220, 6420 slash 8720, 7120 and 7510.
And since this is coming from committee, it does not need a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Policy number 3300, that's the school calendar and time for learning for the first reading. I would like to recommend that that policy not go to for a second reading on our next board meeting, but that first of all, that it be deferred to the CNI Committee so that we can look at it. There's a change in that policy now. It's interesting that, a little one word, and and or. And so if you read that policy, then I would like for it to go and to the CNI Committee meeting and then refer it back to the Policy Committee.
And, and that word, maybe you could explain, it's 185 days and or?
Or.
The general statute for the instructional day used to read 180 days and 1,000 hours. And that's the way our schedule had to be set. The General Assembly this last session increased the days to 185 days, so that, but they also increased the hours to 1,025, but they replaced the and with or. So you can, you can either be in school 185 days or you can meet the 1,025 hour requirement. To meet the 1,025 hour requirement, we would need to extend the school day everywhere except the high school. The high schools currently, if you look at their block schedule, are in school 1,080 hours. So they already surpassed the requirement of 1,025. If you do not extend the day for elementary and middle and you go with 185 days, that means the high schools would have to add on the other five days to keep everyone on the same schedule.
So we would need a motion to amend this motion to pull Policy 3300 and send it back to Curriculum and Instruction and bring it back for first reading as soon as they can make a decision.
Right. Yeah, because I think again, the concern would be with the elementary schools.
And we will need a second to that amendment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor of pulling Policy 3300 from the calendar to be further discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, Policy 3300 will be sent back to committee. And now, we're back to the original motion, which is to approve the first reading of the remaining policies. It's been moved, is there any discussion on the original motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the policies are approved for second reading. And Mr. Benardi, if we have a motion, we'll retire to closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential or not a public record under NCGS Section 143-318.11A1.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll retire to closed session.